Glad to call this meeting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into session. Tonight, I will be giving the invocation. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Andrew Ferguson. This time, I'd ask you to please stand.
Our God most gracious, heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity to live in the land of the free, the land where we're able to have meetings, where we're able to have our religion the way that we want it to be, our freedom of speech. Lord, I'd ask that you'd be with our military personnel, both at home and abroad, be it those who have been sick and afflicted, be it our leaders as the world seems to be in a bad situation, bombs bursting in different states, different countries, be it those leaders that we can bring peace and harmony throughout the world. Help our leaders in our national, our federal, and our state, and be with each and every one of us as we go through our homes tonight. For we ask all thy things in thy name. Amen.
Amen. Salute.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. At this time, we have a special recognition, and I would like to ask our Economic Development Chairman if he would come forward, along with Mr. Roy Calcane, if he would come forward.
You've got plenty of them here, then, right?
Yeah.
That's a good thing. But you've got the people that do the work.
Exactly right. Exactly right.
All right. Good deal.
This is Kevin Mann, Senior Vice President of Operations, and Roy Bearden, Senior Vice President of Manufacturing.
Nice to meet you, sir. Absolutely. Well, it was a distinct pleasure tonight that I have the opportunity, on behalf of the North County Department of Commerce, Rural Divisions Building Renovation Grant Program, to present to Roy Calcane and Craftmaster Furniture a check for $480,000. These funds were used to renovate, and if you've noticed the former Broihill facility on N.C. 90 East, you'll see what everybody's been talking about. It looks really, really nice. They've done a fantastic job of improving this facility, the parking lot, the building. They even closed the windows up top, and they've got rid of the 1920s look to the top of the building. Looks absolutely fantastic. The Alexander County matching funds on this was for $24,000 for the grant, and this grant also states that Craftmaster Furniture will recreate a much-needed 48 jobs for Alexander County. And on behalf of the Alexander County Commissioners, the Department of Commerce, Mr. Calcane, I'd like to present this check to you, sir, and say congratulations on the job well done.
Thank you, Larry, very much.
And continue the progress.
We will. Thank you very much. There you go. Get a picture there. Feel like I won a golf tournament. That's great. Larry, thank you very much. I'd also like to thank the Commissioners for their support. David Eisenhower, Head of the EDC, for his support. David started the process, I guess, about a year ago, dealing with the state of North Carolina. Sharon Decker, I'd like to thank her, Commerce Secretary, and our Governor, Pat McCrory, who have initiated this program, the Building Reuse Program. And these funds will go to good use. We've already spent about $2.5 million on the facility, and we have created, I believe, about 70 jobs. Our goal is to create 40 jobs.
Good job.
Our goal is to create 48 jobs in order to get the $480,000, and we had about 18 months to do that. We've created those jobs in probably seven or eight months, essentially, and we're still hiring. We'd love to hire probably another 20 sewers and upholsters in our facility, so we plan on continuing to grow. Our business this year has grown 15% first half of the year. Our profitability is strong, and we plan on continuing. So Roy Bearden and Kevin Mann are responsible for the renovation of the building, and Kevin handled most of the renovation, and Roy handles all the manufacturing and the hiring of the folks there. So we're proud to announce last Wednesday, we built the first piece of Craftmaster Furniture in the new facility. It was in the Taylorsville Times last week. That building's been vacant probably for three or four years. I once worked for Broihill Furniture up in Lenour, and that plant was a $75 million plant that produced about, had about 400 employees in the facility, and our goal is to get back to those kind of numbers. We still have the challenge of trying to hire skilled sewers and upholsterers. We're working with CVCC on a training program with Garrett Henshaw to develop some of the young folks to create the skills of sewing and upholstery. So anybody has young family members that want to come to work, we're hiring. Tell them to come down to Craftmaster, fill an application. We'd love to have them, so. But thank you all very much for this.
Yes, sir.
We really do appreciate it.
Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is the Commissioners' report. If any of our Commissioners have any report they'd like to give at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I have something.
Go ahead, Mr. Ferguson.
I had the opportunity, the very pleasant opportunity, to tour all the volunteer fire agencies in the county, including the substations and the rescue squad, and the Fire Marshal, Russell Green, took me on the tour, and it was an amazing 20 years since I've done that, and it's exceptional to see the amount of equipment that we have, the status of the equipment, the apparatus that we have, but mostly the very enthusiastic and professional people that we have as first responders, volunteer firemen, and volunteer rescue in this county. And I just want to take this time to salute those individuals who take their time to protect us for no pay.
Very good. I agree with you 100 percent. Any other Commissioner how to report at this time?
Well, I would like to make mention of the fact that we have other volunteers in the county that do. The eight-to-10-year-old girls in Alexander County played in a tournament two weeks ago, and they were not beat. They played teams from Alabama, Florida, Virginia, all over North Carolina. They brought home the bacon and never gave up a game. I was so proud I was at every game and cheering on Alexander County. That's a big accomplishment, and the thing that impressed me the most about it was the fact that these are all volunteer coaches. They spent their time and their money and were not paid for one minute of it to go to Morganton to be in this regional. This was, our girls from Alexander County won the North Carolina title. Then they went on to win the Southeast Regional. That's an accomplishment for a little county like Alexander, and I just wanted to make note of that, and commend these coaches. That's where it's at. It's not in paid jobs. It's in the volunteers.
Thank you, there, Commissioner Moose. Anyone else? Ladies and gentlemen, you have your agenda before you tonight. Do you entertain a motion to accept the agenda as is?
Make a motion. We adopt the agenda as presented.
And I second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. And most of you will notice that Commissioner Mayberry is not here at this time. Commissioner Mayberry had a death in his family, Wade Sigmund. I know that most of you all know, and Commissioner Mayberry will try to be along shortly based on the situation at hand, but our condolences go out to the Sigmund family. Item number one is public comment. I believe we did not have anyone to sign up to speak. Very good. This time, so we will not have anyone in public comment. Item number two, public hearing, rezoning case 14-3, Brushy Mountain Golf Course. Seth Harris, county planner. As this is a public hearing, I'd make a motion to open the public hearing.
I second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. The motion carries. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There has been some confusion about this process. I want to give a little recap of how it got to this point before I get into this. The last time you saw me was for text amendment 14-1, which actually added, you approved and added the commercial recreational zoning district to the ordinance. So tonight, you're looking at rezoning a piece of property to that commercial recreational district, and if that is approved, you will look at a use under conditional use case 14-1 for approval or denial. So that being said, we'll get into rezoning case 14-3, the applicant being BMGC LLC, who is represented by Mr. Baxter Hayes tonight, who's here. If you have any questions for him. The current zoning district is R-20, which is residential. The proposed district is CR, which is commercial recreational. The current land use is a golf course, a restaurant, a pro shop, and some other uses associated with a golf course. Proposed use is the golf course to remain, the restaurant to remain, lodging is a new use proposed. It is located at 300 Golf Course Lane and consists of 164.12 acres approximately, and I say that because the town has annexed a portion of this property around the new clubhouse, but that does not take in the portion they're asking to rezone, so that's separate from what you're rezoning tonight, if that makes sense. Land uses within 100 feet include, to the north, residential property; to the south, vacant and residential property; east, more residential property; and to the west, some large vacant tracts of land between this property and the Little River. Zoning districts include some town of Taylorsville zoning to the north, which is residential; R-20 zoning; to the south is more R-20 and R-1 town of Taylorsville zoning; to the east is all Taylorsville zoning, R-2 and R-1; and to the west is R-20 zoning district. According to available tax records and deeds, Brushy Mountain Recreation Association, Inc., purchased the subject property in 1963. The property was transferred to BMGC LLC in 2013. The property owners have recently constructed a new clubhouse on the property. This is a small-scale rezoning or spot zoning request, which many of you may have never seen or may not be familiar with, so I'll go over the background and how we can approve this tonight. The property, spot zoning means the property is completely surrounded by a zoning district that is considerably different from the requested district. Spot zoning is invalid or illegal unless there is a clear reasonable basis for treating a singled-out property differently from adjacent land, and that sentence, those quotes there comes from the General Statutes. So for any request involving spot zoning, the board must address two questions. First, did the zoning activity in the case constitute spot zoning as our courts have defined that term? And, two, if so, did the zoning authority make a clear showing of a reasonable basis for the zoning? So we have determined that it is spot zoning, so we must find a clear reasonable basis for approving this, and you can look at four factors to determine that reasonable basis, including the size of the tract, the compatibility of the disputed zoning action with an existing comprehensive plan, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the petitioning property owners, neighbors, and surrounding community, and finally, the relationship between the uses envisioned under the new zoning and the current uses of adjacent land. If at any point during this you have any questions about, feel free to interrupt me. So the size of the track is 164.12 acres. What you're really looking at there is that you're not singling out a track for different zoning from, you know, from other surrounding tracks. In other words, you're not treating one person unfairly compared to other people around. Second part is looking at compatibility of the disputed zoning action with an existing comprehensive plan. Our zoning ordinance describes the R-20 district, the current zoning, as being established to provide quiet, low-density living areas consisting of only single-family and related uses necessary for sound neighborhoods, as opposed to the commercial recreational district, which is established to provide suitable locations for those commercial activities which provide leisure, entertainment, lodging, and dining-type facilities. Our 2008 comprehensive plan does show this proposed future use of the area labeled as parks and open space. It will be up to you to determine whether this use would fit under the definition of parks and open space and uses related to that. Next, you need to look at the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the petitioning property owner, neighbors, and surrounding community. The board must determine what impact the rezoning will have upon the adjacent property owners and the surrounding community. The benefits of the rezoning should outweigh any potential inconvenience or harm to the community. The relationship between the uses envisioned under the new zoning and the current uses of adjacent land. Existing golf course has been in existence for approximately 50 years. A restaurant has also existed on the subject property since prior to the adoption of countywide zoning. The proposed lodge would help promote the property and neighborhood as a leisure destination. Please note that all the uses allowed in commercial recreational districts should be considered, not only the use for which the applicant is applying. Per our usual practice, letters were sent by first-class mail to the property owners within 100 feet of the parcel, which included several tracts that you can see on your map up there, and a notice was published in the Taylorsville Times. I did receive one phone call and some comments at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There was concern, some concern about runoff from the construction project onto adjacent property, mainly the Watts property, and he was concerned about how it would affect his property. That was really the only concerns that were put forth at that meeting. Staff does recommend approval of their request due to the following. The current use existed prior to the adoption of countywide zoning, and the request allows for continuance of the existing use and for the addition of uses that would enhance the neighborhood. Like I said before, the Planning and Zoning Commission have already heard this on July 10th, and they unanimously recommend approval based upon the following facts. The requested use is consistent with the 2008 comprehensive plan. Benefits for the surrounding neighborhood outweighed any perceived detriments. The existence of the current use, uses existed prior to countywide zoning, and the proposed use would enhance and promote the existing uses. So based on what I provided you tonight, you, the county Commissioners, must determine whether the rezoning request meets the guidelines set forth above and is reasonable in regards to the public interest. Again, the board Commissioners must consider all uses within the requested zoning district, not just the one for which the applicant proposes. So we have a few more pictures here. This is the overall track that you would be rezoning. You can see the golf course, fairways, and the like. The proposed use, which we'll see next, is in the upper right-hand corner. That's all I have.
Seth, a question I have for you. If you go back to the picture, the, that's it. If you look at the upper-right portion of the golf course picture, it's my understanding that the lodge units will be that little, that, that's the color picture, where the cars are parked up in the right-hand corner?
Yes, sir.
To the right of that?
And for the next case, I have a better zoomed-in picture of that, so I can see the area better.
All right.
Yes, but you're correct. Yes.
So the only, only comment you had at the hearing was just basically about the runoff?
Yes, sir.
And was that addressed in any way, shape, or form?
It really wasn't because they couldn't place conditions on the rezoning request.
Right.
But it is something you could possibly do tonight for the conditional use, the next case to come up.
Right, I understand. But since those questions came up, that's why I wanted to ask.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak concerning this rezoning issue? Any other Commissioners have anything they'd like to ask?
What would this do to the tax valuation? Will it change the tax valuation?
That'd be a question that we'd have to ask. Did you hear the question?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry.
The question was whether or not this would have anything to do with the tax valuation of the property.
From what I've been told in the past, the tax office looks at the use of the properties, not the zoning or what's nearby. Now, this could increase, make the sale value of adjacent properties go up, or I wouldn't think it'd make them go down, but we'll say it can make them go up. That can make tax values go up if the value of adjoining land went up because of this new use and that sort of thing.
Any other questions or concerns from any Commissioners at this time? Anyone in the audience that would like to say anything? Do you entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I second.
I move to close the public hearing. Have a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. The motion carries. Gentlemen, I want your pleasure, oh, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. Is there a motion to approve this, or?
I make a motion. We approve this if we're referring to the previous zoning request.
This is, this is the change in the zoning issue there on that property to rezon.
Zone 14-3. I make a motion. We approve it.
And I second it.
I'd like to amend the motion, and I amend the motion as follows, that I think this should be approved based on the recommendation of the staff, that the staff, the current use existed prior to the adoption of the countywide zoning. The request allows for the continuance of the existing use and for the addition of uses that would enhance the neighborhood, and it's consistent with our 2008 comprehensive plan. Benefits for the surrounding neighborhood outweigh any perceived detriments. The existence of the current uses existed prior to countywide zoning, and the proposed use would enhance and promote the existing uses. I'll make that in the form of an amended motion.
I'll second your amended motion.
Any other discussion? The, all those in favor on the amended motion, please indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. The entertaining, the motion was made to approve. Any discussion? I'd entertain, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, the next item of business is the public hearing, conditional use permit 14-1 Brushy Mountain Golf Course, Seth Harris, county planner. I'd make a motion at this time to open for a public hearing.
Second.
All those, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. The motion carries. Mr. Harris?
Thank you again. So now that the property has successfully been rezoned, we can hear this proposed use for the property, which requires conditional use approval from you also. So this is conditional use permit 14-1, which is requesting approval for a lodging facility. The applicant is also BMGC LLC, located at 300 Golf Course Lane. The project area for the lodging establishment is approximately 1 acre. The gross floor area of said building is 3,200 square feet. The existing land use, as we said before, is a golf course and restaurant and other associated uses. Zoning is north, again, is town of Taylorsville and R-20 zoning. South is the same. East is R-2, a residential zoning district, and R-1 residential. West is also R-20, the county's residential zoning district. Land uses are to the north, residential; south, vacant and residential; east, residential; west, vacant. So we'll go over this again. According to available tax records and deeds, Brushy Mountain Recreation Association, Inc., purchased the subject property in 1963. It was transferred to the applicant in 2013, and again, the current uses of the property have existed since prior to the adoption of countywide zoning in 2001. The commercial recreational zoning district allows for lodging establishments with conditional approval from the county Commissioners. The proposed facility will meet setback requirements as outlined by the Alexander County zoning ordinance. The ordinance does require a visual buffer between the requested use and adjacent residential property. The buffer may consist of a landscaped earthen berm, hedges, planted or existing vegetation, an opaque fence, a wall, or any combination of the above, and all that is quoted from the landscaping section of the zoning ordinance. All existing parking facilities do meet ordinance requirements, and that's with the addition of the new proposed use. Again, per our standard practice, letters were sent by first-class mail. A sign was posted on the property, and an ad was placed in the Taylorsville Times to announce this public hearing, and the same call was received after that meeting, so from Mr. Watts about the runoff from the adjoining property. So staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. First, a buffer shall be constructed so as to reduce the visual impact of the proposed use on adjacent residential properties. Preservation of existing vegetation shall be maximized where such vegetation contributes to the required screening. Two, the light source of outdoor lighting fixtures must not be directly visible from adjoining properties and shall be designed to provide minimum impact on adjacent residential Three, architectural design of the lodging facility shall match the existing clubhouse. Four, interior landscaping shall be designed and maintained so as to enhance the visual appeal of the property. We have some more pictures here. Again, there's the overall piece of property. Go to the next slide. They're showing the adjoining property owners again. Go to the next slide. There's a zoom-in, zoomed-in picture of the proposed area, which is on the right-hand side of your screen. You can see those rusty roof golf cart shack there, which has been torn down. In that vicinity is where it would be at, located at. It'd also, if I understand right, take up some of the parking area towards the northeast corner there, and the new lodge is, of course, that's not the new lodge on there, that's the old lodge, but, or the old clubhouse, but new clubhouse is roughly in the same location.
A question I have, the lodge units we're talking about is a facility that would encompass 10 lodges, in my words, not the, anybody else's words, but similar to motel units. But their architecture will be, as you said, similar to the clubhouse, so we're going to call them lodges. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir. Are you, are you saying 10 rooms, or?
10 rooms, yeah.
Right. One building from, from where I understand, yes.
Okay. And this may be looking too far out in the future, but I understand there's, if the 10 units go well, there will be additional units added in groups of 10. I mean, one building, they'd have 10 more, another building with 10 more. Where, where would physically they go? All in a line?
If I understand correctly, yes. Mr. Hayes, the applicant is here tonight. I don't know if he wants to answer that or not, but what I understand, to the south of the first lodge.
Baxter, you want to come up and talk about what the plan is for that?
I like that part about them doing well.
Yeah.
So the first place, the first building, see the white, that's actually sand. It's due east of there is where the first 10 go. It's five and five, and the first lodges will have a basement or storage facility. The others will be built on a slab, and they'll go to the north. The first, next 10 will be just north of that, and there's enough room between the right-of-way and building one to get two more buildings in. And then if we're really successful, we'll drop back down to the south of building one, and theoretically, we could build two or three more down through there. The footprint's roughly 21 to 80. Each room's about 320 square feet, two double beds. Basically, that's a hotel room that'll look like the outside of the clubhouse.
This next switch is not meant to put you on the spot, where will any of these units in the first building be handicapped, handicapped accessible?
Yes, one required by the code.
Okay.
Of course, it'll be on the ground floor.
Baxter, not, not questioning the logic of the position, but is there going to be some sort of protection between the practice green and the lodging?
Were there going to be? Were there going to be? You see that bottom row of cars? That's the backside of the driving range. If you go pretty much due east of the front of those cars, it'll be the end of the building. They're not, you know, eighty feet's not a whole lot from that power pole. You can't see the power pole there. Now, if it goes down, say if we go with building four, we'll have to do some work on that. We'll have to reposition people hitting. But that'll be a good thing.
I put some shots into those car houses.
Will you help you do that?
Yes, sir.
For our last building quickly?
Well, we're gonna, if everything goes well tonight, we'll pull the permit. I think we can pull it tomorrow if you guys pass this. They've got all the drawings and everything ready, so we'll start construction tomorrow since we get the permit.
Well, that was going to be the plan. This is probably getting the cart before the horse because we haven't approved this conditional use permit. And you said you would start construction tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
When do you hope to be?
Well, my hopes are always a little bit more than reality sometimes, probably sixty days.
And not to put you on the spot, but what would the typical rental?
We're gonna, we're gonna do eighty dollars a night, plus the sales tax.
Would you have corporate rates also?
Just, we're just gonna do eighty. You know, at least for the first year to see, provide some consistency. That's two double beds. Maybe just a little bit higher than some of the motels in Hickory and cheaper than others, but, you know, like Roy said, we don't want to have to drive to Hickory.
Baxter, how many staff are you going to add for this?
Really, that's the, that's the way we approved in. The infrastructure with the clubhouse and the restaurant doesn't require any management. We were putting in a new computer POS system, accounting system. And so all the reservations, the payments will be done just across the parking lot. Based on the average of eighteen for reuse, twenty-two, twenty-three minutes per living unit, I mean, for hotel room, national average, then it would take about one person and a half a day. And so we'll probably just incorporate that with the additional, or the cleaning we're doing right now. We will outsource to, right now, probably Ausco, the Lenins. It's just hard to justify that small amount to them yourself.
Seth, I have one final question for you. You've put in a recommendation that the architectural design of the facility matches the existing clubhouse. Is that based upon previous other counties doing this, or is there a requirement? Why would that specifically be put in there?
You're right, it's not in our zoning ordinance now. It is something that other counties have required. It's something we've talked about doing countywide, but it's not, I mean, it's not in our zoning ordinance. It's, and I'm pretty sure the design is going to be consistent with the clubhouse anyway. So it's not an unreasonable condition, so to speak.
Same, same shing, roof shingles, that siding will be cedar shakes. The backside probably will not be cedar shakes, it'll be something, probably flat boards.
Baxter, I'm gonna stick to, straight to what's on here about the rezoning and everything, what you requested for. Doesn't matter to me what type of facility you build, so, you know, I'm gonna stick straight to the, what it's all about here. This thing about the runoff that the people's asked for, I know you're a good steward with your neighbors. You always have tried to be. And I think that's one of the things that you know and I know, that we've all had to look at in the past out there in certain areas, and you've dealt with it down on the low side. I mean, I don't, I don't foresee, this is me, do you foresee any problems making sure we, you know, we take care of the runoff? Because based on the way this is laid out here and where the house is located and everything, I just want to make sure that we, that you were good stewards to your neighbor and made sure that the runoff was taken care of. And I think with the tight vegetation and everything that you put in there, that's going to absorb a lot of it anyway. But, you know, that's, that's the only question, I think, that came out of that thing, and that's the only thing that I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with, so that we don't have any, because I don't say this doing anything except enhancing everybody's property and making it a better and better facility, so.
Well, the law requires us to take care of it first. And then secondly, that those buildings will actually turn the water. Where in the past, there was a big gully, where in front of those old cart sheds, and there was always an erosion issue through there.
Right.
And I've talked to Troy about this a couple, three, four times, and told him that, you know, if there's any problems at any time. And we've had some problems since we've done some excavation out there, and we've put, we've got three silt fences up right now.
Okay.
So I don't see any things to maybe reduce the impact on erosion.
Okay, right, good deal. That's the only question I have.
So this will increase the number of lodging units in this county by, we only have the motel, correct, with thirty-two units?
We have the motel, there's a motel that's on ninety east, and I think there are three bed and breakfasts in the county to the best of my knowledge. One of them is fully functional on South Center Street, one of them ninety, I mean, sixteen south, and there not one over near Bethlehem, maybe?
Yeah.
Isn't that right? So the best of my knowledge, there's only three bed and breakfasts to my knowledge.
Yeah, and I'm not sure there's one on sixteen south still in operation.
Neither am I. So, you know, I think this doesn't do anything except enhance our community and make our community better. So thank you for your comments. Seth, do you have anything for other?
I was gonna add, you could add the erosion control as a condition onto this with, you may be replicating state requirements, but?
I think, I think based on dinner and based on the regulations already set forth, and based on the laws and everything, I think that that pretty much covers it. I think the, from everything that I've read, maybe I'm wrong, but I think the landowners there should be taken care of, and knowing the people that's involved in this, they've always done the things that they said they would do. These neighbors are there, and I'm sure that with those folks there, that this will be taken care of. I mean, based on state laws, what I'm saying, I mean, if, you know, I don't feel like it'd be necessary to actually put it into the spot zoning. That's my opinion.
You're right, there is, they do have to control erosion runoff.
Right.
Especially if you're clearing off this side of an area, they have to.
Yes, well, if you destroy it, you gotta fix it.
Right.
That's your responsibility as a landlord.
Yes, sir, that's what I understand, too.
Right, and that's the way I read the law. So I think the law in itself should take care of this without having it in place in the spot zoning, because it'll, it'll apply to all state and federal, state and federal regulations that concern runoff in this area.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to say anything? Any commissioners have anything else they'd like to say?
I'd just like to say that if we approve it, I think it's a great step forward in giving people that, business people, people that vacation, family members that stay in Alexander County, a nice place to stay in Alexander County. It's the first time in my lifetime here in Alexander County that we've had a place. And knowing Mr. Hayes, like I know him, it's going to be first class, and it'll be a great place to stay. So I'd just like to commend him for making the effort to do this. We haven't approved it yet, but if it is approved, I think it's really going to be a great thing for the county and the citizens of the county, and citizens out of the county that visit in the county or do business in the county. We talked about Craftmaster, how much their business increased. If a salesman calls on Craftmaster today, and they're from out of the state, they probably have to stay in Hickory Stateville somewhere. Now there's a place for them to stay if it's approved in Taylorsville, at a price that's comparable to what rentals are in other locations. That's all I have to say.
Well, I see it only as being a plus for Alexander County.
Very good. All right, and there's no other comments at this time? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Did you have some?
No, no, I was gonna close the public.
Oh, okay. And I entertain a motion at this time?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Will we close the public hearing?
Motion is made, closed, begin. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion is made, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Gentlemen, at this time, I'll make a motion. I move that this rezoning issue be approved based on the recommendation of the staff approved, recommends approval of this conditional use permit with the following conditions. A buffer shall be constructed so to reduce the visual impact of the proposed use on adjacent residential properties. Preservation of existing vegetation, vegetation shall be maximized where such vegetation contributes to the required screening. The light source of outdoor lighting fixtures must not be directly visible from adjoining properties and shall be designed to provide minimum impact on adjacent residential properties. Architectural design of the lodging facility shall match the existing clubhouse. Interior landscaping shall be designed and maintained so as to enhance the visual appeal of the property. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion is made, second. Is there any discussion?
No, I just say, I would amend the motion to add the staff recommendations.
That's what I just did.
Okay, you did it.
That was the total staff recommendation.
Well, then I'm regurgitated what you said.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
Good luck, Baxter.
Item, item number four on the agenda, concerns for the compensatory education program at CVCC and Hopkey Oxentine.
Hi. I'm gonna start with the letter that I wrote to you all back in May, so that you have a background or everybody else has a background. In January of two thousand and twelve, we presented the idea to the county to begin with the compensatory education program in Alexander County. With the help of Catapa Valley Community College and the county manager, Rick French, our program was expedited and up and running by May of two thousand and twelve. We started with just four students. As of today, which was done in May, we had thirteen students, with the promises of four to five coming after graduation in two thousand and fourteen. I can tell you as of today, there was two more students enrolled this morning. So that brings us up to fifteen. As a, as a parent of a young adult, it is highly imperative that our voices be heard for those who are unlikely to have their own voice. We are extremely proud and thankful to live in Alexander County, a county which provides excellent education opportunities and programs, not only for students without physical needs or mental limitations, but for those who do not have such limitations. As a parent with such individuals, we are seeking what is best for our young adults in order for them to reach their full potential, and we recognize their abilities and their limitations. The compensatory education program offered by CVCC in Alexander County not only provides an education setting, but astonishing mental growth. This program has allowed our young students to give back to the community that has given to them. A few examples: volunteering at the Crisis Center, maintaining a harvest community garden, which y'all can pick up tomatoes and peppers on your way out at the table; the distributing of supplies for the litter sweep; help in backpacking supplies for the needies; bake goods for the Smart Start; helping with the Blood Cross, Red Cross blood drive; collecting empty recycle bins here at CVC; and also trash pickup on the campus; and also beautifying the campus around with flowers and picking up out around the campus. Not only does this program allow our students to give back to the community, it also provides the community by providing jobs for teachers and teachers assistants. Our program is in jeopardy, our program is in jeopardy as of other programs at CVCC this fall under the Basic Skills Program. We, as a collective group of concerned parents and caregivers, are asking that a line item be used for compensatory education program for here at Alexander County campus, and ask you to include in your upcoming physical year, along with any monies, that you could be earmarked for our program. We thank you in advance. We have already lost one hour a day, which is hard on working parents. For myself, I already have lost one hour a day. I work, I'm supposed to be at work at eight o'clock, but being a mother of a special needs who cannot drive, I do not get to work until ten minutes after or twenty minutes after nine o'clock. And whereas it's okay for some people, you know, in having compassionate employers, I have to stay after and work until eight, I mean, until five thirty, six o'clock at night. So I'm losing time with my, my family. And that might be okay for some people, but not getting home until six thirty, and by the time you get dinner, and by the time she takes all her meds, she takes ten pills a day. I don't get to spend as much time with her. And that might be okay for a lot of people, but it's not okay for me. And we're losing that as parents. And yes, she's twenty-four years old, but, you know, we need to realize that there are these young kids, and they're growing by leaps and bounds in Alexander County. You need to look at the school system. And this school system has more and more kids with autism. And they're growing by leaps and bounds. And this shows that Alexander County needs a program like what we have. And my question is, I'm not asking for a lot. The program needs five thousand dollars. That's not a lot of money. I know with our, with what's going on today, that seems like a bunch of money. But we get thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars from Smoky Mountain Mental Health. Where is that going? Where does that go? My daughter has a mental health problem, and is that thirty-seven thousand dollars going to help my daughter? I don't see it. I pay my taxes to this county. I've lived in this county for eighteen years. My children have all gone to these schools. Alexander County by far has the best school system for educational, by far for men, for mental health and special needs. I have told Mr. French, by far, there is not a better educational special needs program in Alexander County, by far none. I moved to this county from Iredale because I wanted my children to be taught by this county, because I am, I did my research to find out where the best school system was for my daughter. I moved my other two children from Sharon School District, West Iredale, to Alexander County because of her. Because of her. And I need my county to stand up for her. I need my county to stand up for all of them, not just her. She's one person, but you have fifteen in this school, in this building right now, that need you. And if any of you were in our shoes, how would you feel? How would you feel? So all I'm asking is if you can tell me where that thirty-seven thousand dollars from Smoky Mountain Mental Health is going, and why is it not helping my daughter and the other fifteen students here? And why can we not take a little bit of it? I know it's going to RHA, but that's for behavioral. I don't have a behavioral problem child. I mean, I'm sure I could let her go out and hit an old lady over the head and cause her to be behavioral, but that's not the type of child I raised. So I'm just asking for a little bit of help. Half of the five thousand, anything, anything to help us. We need an assistant. We, we've lost, our assistant has lost some of her time. We need an assistant. We have a great teacher, and we have a great assistant. But if my daughter was to have a seizure, who would watch all the other students if we didn't have an assistant?
Topps, excuse me, just a minute. Okay. Mr. French, I know next weekend, you and I are gonna be going to the Smoky Mountain meeting. And at this time, I know that there's some services that they're going to start offering in Alexander County that haven't offered before. I don't know, I know that one of those, I think, is behavioral, that they're going to be doing more of. And where, can you fill everybody, and you serve on that committee, and you and I have talked a little, but I have not studied enough to give an intelligent answer, sir.
The funds that she's referring to that go to RHA do go for behavior-
The funds that she's referring to that go to RHA do go for behavioral health, but honestly, that's a small part of all the services that are performed in the county, far more than $37,000. Smokey's budget's over $300 million for the counties that it serves, so it's sort of hard to break out the $37,000. Actually, it's more than that. So it's, it's all part of it, but the funds are presented to RHA are done not by, not from us, but by Smokey. Our money goes to Smokey Mountain Center. They decide how that money is appropriated.
So we'll get more information on that this next weekend?
Yes.
Okay, because I mean, I'll understand more after that, because I don't, Darrell Robertson probably understood it more thoroughly than any other commissioner, to the best of my knowledge. Is there any funding at all that comes from Smokey Health, from the Smokey Health Group that is applied to CBCC to assist in any way?
No, sir. Not this time, no.
Is there a reason why the, I don't want to sound mean or ugly, okay? All right, my, my wife taught kids with special needs for-
I know, your wife is wonderful.
-thirty years, okay? So that's all I'm gonna say, and I know about this. But the, Linda Graham, who's the director of CBCC here, how, how do they fund it, and what money does CBCC actually put into the program?
Yes, she has given all that to Rick French.
You have all that?
I have the numbers here in front of me tonight.
Okay, I understand. I mean, I'm just asking so that whenever we're together next week, I can get this-
I know that we are short $5,000 from Linda Graham. I know that we are short $5,000. When this letter was wrote to you all on May twenty-third, um, May twenty-seventh, I sent you all a letter-
Right.
-and did not get a response from anybody.
No.
And I was told, you know, that, you know, the county didn't feel like that this was their problem, or, you know, that this was something that they needed to take care of. And, you know, in a, in a way, I see that, but in a way, I don't, because, you know, these kids are Alexander people. These are young adults. They cannot go out and work a full-time job. And they live on a very limited income, a very limited income. They can't drive. They can't take care of themselves, you know?
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna try to cut you short, because I know that you're emotionally involved in this also.
I am very emotionally involved.
And I understand, totally respect that, okay? I understand where you're coming from. But what I will do is this, okay?
Okay.
If you don't mind, Rick and I, the county manager, are gonna be at the Smokey Mountain meeting, and I'll get to learn more about what goes on and how funds are applied and all this, a week from this Thursday. I've got to be in Asheville for three, about three days. And the Smokey Mountain is going to be meeting, and I'll get tremendous amount of information. If you would give me the opportunity to gather this information, and speak with Mr. French, and talk to the other commissioner, and then you and Mr. French and I will sit down and have a meeting after all those discussions are held. And I will do everything that I can do to try to give you an answer within thirty days. Is that fair enough?
That is fair.
You will hear back from me. I'm giving you my word in front of everybody here that can see, hear, read, listen, whatever. And let me get with Mr. French. I need to understand more about how Smokey Mountain distributes their funding and the things that go on. I also would like to know what the state has done to give more money to their community colleges toward this outreach program that they do to assist these people.
Yeah.
And I feel sure that that funding has been cut.
It's been reduced, correct?
Yes, it has been reduced.
That's what I'm saying. And I, and I think there's, there comes a situation that every single year that we look at mental health or people with special needs, it seems the state of North Carolina is cutting that funding. And they've done it for the last, everybody says, like others have done it for the last twelve years.
Oh, I'm, I'm aware of that. I, I contact them too. Trust me. I'm on the phone with them daily, not daily, but-
Right, I understand. But this, this is, this is a, a program that's needed and things that go along. And let me get this information, get the other commissioners and discuss with them, and I'll discuss it with them, and get with Mr. French. And then you and Mr. French now sit down and see what we can do to come to some type of understanding, okay?
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
That is fair.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a good day.
Yes, ma'am. Item number five on the agenda, presentation of the revaluation process and scheduled special call commissioners meeting for August the sixteenth, 2014, for public hearing. I'd call Mr. Curly and Mr. Doug Fox. I hope I didn't skip something, did I?
You didn't.
The member will introduce him in a second.
Okay, very good, sir.
Mr. Chairman and Board, as all of you know, we are in the middle, I'll actually get into, it's the end of an eight-year revaluation as prescribed by law, North Carolina law. We thought, number one, that it would interest you to know that process and where we are and what is involved in that. And then, number two, by law, we are to present you with a schedule of values, which is a part of that process. We have with us Mr. Ron McCarthy, who is representing Tyler Technology, which is a company that we have contracted with to perform our reevaluation or reappraisal. We have a short slide presentation we'd like to show you, and, and then we'll introduce Mr. McCarthy to you to discuss the schedule of values. So if we can start to get the slideshow, please. North Carolina General Statute 105-286 requires that every county in North Carolina perform a reappraisal of their property, the real property, a minimum of once every eight years. Alexander County performed their last reappraisal in 2007. We originally scheduled to do a second, our, our next reappraisal in 2011, and that has been delayed until now. So we are, per general statute, performing one now, because this will be our eighth year. Per that same general statute, and I will quote this from the statute, because this is what we, as a tax office, abide by, "The purpose of a reappraisal is to create a uniform schedule of values, standards and rules to be used in appraising real property at its true and present use value at the time of the reappraisal." That's direct from the general statute. In Alexander County, we operate, staff-wise, one of the smallest, maybe the third smallest, I think, tax office, I'm talking about staff at this point in time, in the state of North Carolina. As a result of that size of our office, we do not have the staff to conduct our own reappraisal. A lot of the larger tax offices in the state have an appraisal staff, and they, they conduct their own. Because we're a small office, we're pretty much have to contract with an outside vendor to pretty much conduct our revow. And we have contracted with the county's approval, Tyler Technologies, to assist us in that. I might add that Ron McCartney, who you'll meet shortly, has been involved in the last two reappraisals that Alexander County has done, so he's very familiar with the, the county, the geography of the county, the layout of the county, and, and the, the nature of the county, pretty much. The scope of the work required in, in our reappraisal for 2015, and in all reapraisals, basically, is number one, to establish a, a uniform schedule of values that all properties valued by. The type of reappraisal that we have decided to do is an all parcel visit. Now, when I say all parcel visit, there are parcels in our county that it's not feasible to visit, because we don't furnish Tyler Technology helicopter. And some of the parcels that are in this county, that's about the only way to access them. So to tell you and the citizens of the county that they've put foot on every parcel in the county would not be true. We have other sources of, of information that allows them to, to consider those parcels and value those parcels. But the type of reappraisal that we're involved with now is basically an all parcel visitation type revow. The, the data that they collect by visiting parcels and by reviewing improvements to those parcels, structures, buildings, whatever type of improvement might be, is then that data has to be entered into our system, the county system. We operate under a system developed and called One Tax System. And, and Tyler does that data entry also, as they, as they collect it. Another step in that, towards the end of this, and, and these are happening later on from now, we haven't got to these stages yet. Once new values, as a result of all this visitation and collection of data are established, every property owner in Alexander County will be sent a notice of their new property value. As a result of that notice, if there are people who disagree with those values, by law, they have the right to appeal those values. The first step in the appeal process is what's known as informal appeals. They have the opportunity to contact representatives of Tyler, because they're the ones that have gathered all this information, and contest their value. We'll talk just a little bit more about how that is done, and what the, there are different levels of appeals as they go forward then. The role that we, as a tax office, play in that, per contract in most of these situations, is we provide office space, and we provide office supplies to Tyler. We provide computers, and then we also provide training on our system, so that they can enter data, and on the use of the county's GIS system. And I might add, the GIS system is probably one of the most valuable tools that we have in not only providing Tyler Technologies with information, but providing citizens of the county with information. And it's, this is, we're in a situation now where, when for whatever reason that system might not be available to us for technical reasons, we almost can't operate a tax office. So there's, that's a very valuable tool for us and for Tyler Technology. We, Doug will talk about this just a little bit later, but we break the county up into neighborhoods, and part of our service to Tyler is to provide them with maps, aerial maps, of each neighborhood as we classify them. And then, of course, we're in constant communication with Tyler, with questions they may have, with providing them information. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Doug, and let him give you the rest of the PowerPoint, and then we'll introduce Ron.
Thank you.
Doug, by the way, I'm sorry, is our, is the assessor in our office. The responsibility of the assessor is basically valuation of, of the property, so that's where his role comes in.
Thank you. The ultimate goal of a reappraisal is to create uniformity, and we want a taxed property at fair market value and appraised property at fair market value. Some of the tools we use to, to do that is sales history of similar properties, the condition of the property, the replacement cost new of the property, the potential income, and the property's highest and best use. And I'm gonna go over the timeline a little bit, just so you know. In 2013, Tyler set up office, and they're at the old Chamber Building, if, just so you know where they are. They started looking at neighborhoods and collecting data. And in November, they began to get out and reviewing properties. In April, they're continuing to review, and they're starting to enter data. They started to enter data in our CAM system. Towards the end of July, we've finalized the schedule of values, and that's why we're here tonight to present that to you guys. In September, hopefully, the schedule of values will be adopted, and we'll, Gail will talk a little bit more about that later. Hopefully, December to January, we'll mail out notices of values to property owners. And then in February, we'll hold informal hearings, and that's part of the appeal process. And then in August, we will mail tax bills with the, the new 2015 values associated. We came up with a few questions that are always asked to us in regards to reevaluation. The first being, how much are values gonna change, either up or down? And even at this point, it's still way too early to tell. We're not finished reviewing. Got to run a whole lot of analysis on what we have looked at, so it's just too early to tell at this point. We get asked a lot, what will the amount of our new tax bill be? And that, of course, is dependent upon the new value and the tax rate. That won't be set until June of 2015. The last question is, how can I appeal my property value? Touched on that a little bit earlier. The first one is, when you receive the notice, there'll be some contact information on there to contact Tyler for the informal hearings. And after that appeal, if you're still not satisfied, you can appeal to the Alexander County Board of Equalization and Review. And if you don't get the result you want from that, you can appeal to the North Carolina Property Tax Commission. And that concludes our presentation. Now I'm gonna introduce Ron McCarthy from Tyler Technologies, talk to you a little bit about the schedule of values. Thank you.
I have worked in Alexander County three times, and I also worked with Mr. French in Lincoln County, where I still live. So I'm familiar with the area. But why we're here tonight is to present our schedule of values and the appraisal manual that's used to value all the property in the county. We have to be able to value all the property and all the real property in Alexander County, so we have to have standards for that. Now the purpose of the schedules are to generate values based on information we've gathered in the field for market values, cost values, income values. To narrow it down to the smallest point, any taxpayer should be able to get a copy of his property card, compare the property card to the schedule of values, and see how the value was determined. General statutes require that we have a property record card for each property detailing the components of the property and what went to the valuation of it. Now, the, tonight is just the presentation. We're gonna ask for a meeting shortly for a public hearing, which is required by statute as well. After the public hearing, you have to, within twenty-one days of the public hearing, commissioners are asked to approve the schedules. It's, North Carolina's the only state that does that, but at this time, that's how, how we do it. And once they're approved, then taxpayers will still have the opportunity to appeal the schedule of values to the Property Tax Commission. Now, after the, tonight, after these are presented, they will be available in Mr. Curly's office for any taxpayer who would like to inspect these schedules. So they will be there until they're adopted for anyone to review these. Any questions on what the schedules are?
Gail, are they gonna be available online, or just physically in your office?
I have a question that's not related to the book, or I would ask, quite frankly, if, if your company has been involved in reevaluation in counties surrounding Alexander County.
Yes, sir.
What is the general finding of the value of property since 2008 and the downturn in the economy?
Okay, I can speak firsthand for Lincoln County. Lincoln County did a revaluation in 2008. They did another one in 2011, because eight was when it started to turn downward. And the results of the 2011 was an overall decrease of about seven percent county-wide values.
Any other examples come to mind?
Well, I recently assisted Watauga County. There, they had a two percent reduction, average reduction in values.
What about counties similar in nature to Alexander County, like Ash County, Avery County, so forth? Do you have any background on that?
I'm working in Graham County a little, and it's a very small county in western North Carolina. And they're looking at about a ten percent reduction in assessed values.
Leading question, but maybe a fair one. Would it, and assume is always a bad word to use, but could a person listening that owns a piece of property assume that their property values in general are gonna go up or gonna go down?
You gotta be careful how you answer that.
Yeah, I don't think I can, I don't think I can answer that question, but because we use the concept of neighborhoods, some areas in the county have increased, some areas haven't. And, of course, with the economy, you know, we, we just started working on the lakefront properties. We haven't even looked at the impact of those yet.
I think yours is going up.
So we can't, you, you can't really fairly answer that question, but, uh, I know the counties I've worked in, Watauga, Lincoln, I haven't worked in the- I know the counties I've worked in, Watauga, Lincoln, I haven't worked in, the smallest county I worked in before this was Montgomery County, North Carolina. They have about 30,000 parcels and they had two lakes, Lake Tiller and Baden Lake. And their property values basically held the line, held, held steady. But that was a 2012 reevaluation, which the one before was in 2004. So you had a rise and then a decrease and then a steadying out, so.
That was lakefront property?
It's in Montgomery County, yes.
Yeah.
I, I've got a question and I apologize for being late. I had a death in the family, but what, what date, and I, I just, you know, walked in as you're finishing up your presentation, but what was the date, or what's the date where you start looking at sales?
Oh, we've been, we've been looking at sales since 2013.
So you start January 1st, 2013?
Right. And we'll continue to look at sales throughout the balance of this year.
Okay.
I think you mean how far back do you look at sales?
Well, yes.
How far back do you look at sales?
Well, we, when we started in 13, of course, we're looking at 2012 sales. And we gather data, but we continually analyze the data. We do sales ratio studies by neighborhood in the system. So, you know, but we'll, we'll continue to look at sales that occur between now and January 1st.
Okay.
If I can, speak, just say on that, the, um, the number of sales are way down. So where you used to better look at a six month to a year window, sometimes you gotta stretch that out in order to find something. You know, it's a lot tougher. I think the past two years, we, we have to do a sales ratio every year to turn it to the state and they ask us for a sample. It's not every sale in the county, but they, it's a, it's a sample. And we've been around 100%, but I looked at our sales before we left and we, we had 300 sales last year, good sales in the county. So sometimes it's hard to find that sale you're looking for in one year.
Well, appraisers are having that problem and it's been a problem to find a comparable property when you're appraising, you know, for sale, so.
That's right.
And, and that's still been somewhat of a problem, even the last six months to a year.
To the point, we're even looking at properties offered for sale and asking price on them to get a feel for what properties you're going for.
Right.
Do you consider a foreclosure as a good sale or a bad sale?
We don't even consider it.
Well, would you say that we have more bad sales in the county than we have good sales right now?
I don't know if it's more, but it's, it's close.
It's a lot. It's a lot more than it ever has been.
We, we, we even screen what we think are inter-family sales that may not, that may be sold at discounted prices because, for example, if I sold my son a piece of property and I gave him a really good deal, we try to screen those kinds of sales. We don't consider those valid if we can determine that to be the case.
But you're looking at somebody financing a piece of property through a bank or savings loan and what they actually had to pay for that piece of property for. Do you do that to determine what a sale is?
Excite stamps on a deed is what's supposed to determine the selling price. They're recorded with a deed. You pay excite stamps when you record that deed, which is supposed to be indicative of the sale.
Okay.
And a lot of the forced sales that you're speaking of don't even have stamps on them. They're hard to find, what, unless people tell us. Sometimes we don't know what they paid for, some of these distressed sales. Cause Fanny Mae, some of those people, they don't have to put stamps on them. They don't have to pay excite tax, so.
The definition would be a willing buyer and a willing seller.
Right.
Uh, what, what, what market price is.
Let me, let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fox, are you getting the information you need?
You're asking wrong. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, sir.
I mean, as far, as far as the selling stuff we're talking about.
Well, when, when a deed is recorded, the county researches the deed. We get the information from the county as far as that goes.
So the answer is yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Another question about the process or about the schedule?
One thing about the, every property is not gonna sell and every property hasn't sold, but the schedules ensure equalization among the properties.
So the thing you're all here for tonight is the schedule? You're here to ask for a public hearing on August the 16th?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
And it will not be here. It'll be at the county administration building in the bottom floor.
On the bottom floor.
This room's not available.
Yeah. The law prescribes a schedule. These events are happening.
Right.
There'll actually be a public notice printed in this week's Taylorville Times advertising the public hearing on August the 18th, assuming you agree to meet that night. That is, that'll be a special call meeting for y'all. And then it also says that this book's open for public review. We're leaving a copy in the county administration building also if someone would rather go there as a tax office. Then that, there, that advertises the public hearing. We would hope that your September, your regular September meeting, you would entertain approving the schedule of values. And then we'll do the necessary public advertising, prescribe a law to give folks opportunity to appeal this schedule of values if they choose to do that. That's a, that's the final step in the process of the schedule of values. So basically, our request tonight is if you will approve the schedule of...
I understand, but now, now how do you advertise where this book is as far as the people coming to look at it? Is that going to be in the public hearing statement?
That's a public notice that will go in the paper this week.
Okay, so it's in the public, okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood where it was.
Well, just explain to me how someone would know whether or not they approve of it or disapprove of it. Are they, is, is the average John Doe out there gonna know from this thing you're gonna put in there what he's looking at?
If he's willing to read that manual, it's about 300 pages long.
So, so we can expect not very many people at this hearing?
I think history proves that not very many people take the title of it.
Right, but it's just required by law?
It's required by law, yes.
Okay.
Really, the question, the question comes at the time we mail the values. That's when they see their specific value and it's usually at that point in time they get interested in what the, the effect of the reappraisal, reappraisal is.
And that's when they start coming and wanting a hearing.
That's correct. We'll talk to you a little bit more about that if you're interested. The way, those hearings can be done, they can actually be requested. You can return a form if you choose not to come and appeal your value during the informal hearing process. Or if you, if, if you, if you do that, you, or you can call and set up a personal face-to-face meeting. There's a couple of different ways you can do even the informal hearing process.
So they'll have several opportunities to, if they don't agree with the value, to protest.
The law prescribes that, that they have several opportunities and several levels of appeal if they're not satisfied, yes.
Nothing's changed, in other words.
That's right. You're absolutely right.
Status quo.
Same process that the law's prescribed for years.
For centuries.
Gentlemen, I entertain, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me, I entertain a motion to approve having the public hearing and a special call meeting on August the 18th. At the county administration office in the, in the county administration building downstairs and it will start at 7:00 PM?
Six.
Six, excuse me, six, it should, I'm sorry. Seven stays on my mind. That's usually when the first pitch is. Six o'clock.
Second.
Motion's made and second, is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, we have conformed to the law of the great state of North Carolina, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Appreciate you being here. Item number eight, personnel policy amendment. Mr. Rick French, county manager.
Agenda item is the personnel policy amendment and the amendment is effective November 1st, employees will be, will be required to use direct deposit for all payroll dispersments as due to a change in our distribution and most of our employees currently use direct deposit, but this will make it official in our personnel policy.
I entertain a motion to approve the personnel policy amendment.
I make a motion, we approve the personnel policy amendment?
Second.
Motion's made and second, is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. All opposed likewise, motion carries. Thank you. Resolution authorizing execution of letter of intent for possible solar energy farm. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, you have a resolution authorizing the execution of this letter of intent. In the information, what it states is that what this does is starts the process for an engineering firm to look at the county's landfill property, which is located on 2500 Payne's Dairy Road, which was closed, the old landfill, which was closed in 1997, to be used or be considered for a solar energy farm. And what this resolution does just starts, is just the first step in the process. We have today, we received a letter of intent and some information and we passed that on to the attorney for review, but we'll be back to you with a report on the information and details. We don't know very much more about it than that at this time.
I understand that, to the respect of that part, I have a question on all these solar farms though. If they, you know, say this goes through, so they wanna do this and they tender an offer. And I know negotiations can do a lot of things. Will we be able to put buffers around these things so you can't see this farm? I mean, the ones in Catawba, Kent, it looks like a big field out there, nothing except these.
Yes, sir.
Solar farms, I think it's great, I think they're fantastic, but.
Yes, sir.
There needs to be some way to control them where you don't ride by and see them every single day.
Yes, sir, we will.
All right, good deal.
Mr. French, I have a question. Looking at the range of county income from 150 to $300,000.
Yes, sir.
Is that based upon the contract that Petra would in, enter into with the power company that buys their power from the solar farm?
Partially, yes, sir.
Okay. What's the other part?
It's all, it's deals with us and the, and the study.
Okay.
And again, none of that's been done yet, so they were just getting started. They just gave us a range.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Motion's made and second, is there any further discussion?
I do have one question. Is there, these solar farms are possible through energy subsidies. If those subsidies go away at some time in the future, is there any indication of what, you know, would happen to these solar farms?
That's right. We'd have to, I guess, address that in the agreement.
Okay.
May, may I ask one more other question too? It's along those lines. I read a study not too long ago about the fact that a lot of individuals and companies are building solar farms and other types of renewable energy production and the power companies such as, and I'm, I'm only, I'm only naming, Duke Power is known as Duke Energy now is just an example of one, that there is so much alternative power being produced by these solar farms and other sources, energy production, they can't receive all this alternative energy. And so, do we have any assurances that if they build this farm, they will actually sell their power?
I, I mean, Mr. Commissioner, I'm not sure how to answer that. We'll just have to, again, with something we'll have to look at as we get into this.
Well, it kinda relates to what Mr. Mayberry was asking.
It does.
They build this big farm and they don't get an agreement with Duke Energy or whoever, then that farm sits out there and.
Right.
Whose responsibility is it to maintain it or dismantle it or so forth?
In, in the, in the information, that little bit of information I've seen, it's their responsibility to maintain it, but that's something that we would address in the agreement.
Okay.
A 20-year life cycle for a solar farm, that means during that 20-year life cycle, they're gonna have to replace those panels, so that depends on the cost benefit analysis for them. They're asking to lease land, that's essentially the...
Right, that's correct.
And as far as it looks, I don't see that solar panel farm will look any worse than what it looks right now.
True that.
And I think it's a great idea because I'm from that area and I just believe that it will be, it will help with reducing the cost of electricity to people.
Do you have any other comments? All those in favor, keep raising your right hand. All opposed likewise, motion carries. Thank you very much. Number eight, sales tax update. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a slide for you to look at, but basically through 11 months, the county has collected $3,327,321, which is a little, just a little bit higher than the percent of year expired. That $3,300,000 is almost the same amount of money we collected this time last year. Actually, it's $7,000 less. We budgeted $3,611. In the slide that you have in front of you, we basically show the percent of the year, just what I just mentioned, the percent of the budget that we collected, which is 92.14% and the actual collection, which is $3,327,321.15. The thing that we keep, that we've mentioned every time we do a sales tax report is that the whole harmless is what gets us, which is $113,153, so. But we're right on our budget number overall, so that's my update.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. French.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Number nine, board appointments and reapportments. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appointments for the Animal Control Advisory Board, appoint Josh Mitchell and Jennifer Sigmund as ex-officio members, senior center advisory committee, reappoint Judy Rayo three years.
I entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve this.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Also, look down there and so that everyone will know, there's several vacancies that are open and people talk about getting involved, knowing what's going on with county government and the different things and the, the different committees. There's a one opening on the Planning and Zoning Commission and this person needs to be from Sharp's one or two township. There are two positions on the Western Piedmont Council of Government, Region E Aging Committee, three on the Western Piedmont Council of Government, Joint Nursing and Adult Care Committee, and two on the Town Planning Board of Adjustments. Now, if you want to serve on the Town Board, Planning Board of Adjustments, you must live in the ETJ. That's that one mile circular around Tyler's Row that gives those people the right to serve on that committee. And we're looking for people, if you want, feel like you'd like to do that, call the county office, ask to speak with Jamie and she'll, she'll present your name, your name for consideration to appointment to one of those boards. Item number 10, budget ordinance number one through seven. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget amendment one is to increase register deeds budget for employees' pay increase due to completion of a six-month training. The pay increase was not included in the original budget estimate. To increase the sheriff's office budget for accrued leave payouts due to employees leaving county employment, vacation, holiday, comp time payouts were not included in the original budget estimates. And to increase detention budget for accrued leave payout due to an employee transferring from full-time to part-time status, vacation, holiday, comp time payouts were not included in the original budget estimates. Budget amendment number two is to adjust the JCPC budget to match the final approved budget by the state. To increase the Health Department budget for additional grant funds available in fiscal year 2015. To increase the DSS budget to pay the fiscal year 2015 application hosting the maintenance fee for NC DSS day sheets and automated process that uploads required day sheets directly to the state, covered by unspent fiscal year 2014 funds. To increase special appropriations budget to pay for fiscal year 2015 operating member match to the Western Piedmont Regional Transit Authority, the original budget estimate was incorrect. To decrease the fire emergency services budget to comply with the accounting, the accounting treatment for three years of code red service to be paid for in fiscal year 2015. Amounts for years two and three are a prepaid item in fiscal year 2015 instead of an expense. Budget amendment number three is to increase the information technology budget to complete the approved software projects begun in fiscal year 2014 for inspections, finance and human resources. Funding is carried over from, from fiscal year 2014 purchase orders. To increase the sheriff's office budget to pay for ammunition ordered with a fiscal, with fiscal year 2014 purchase order, the ammunition can't be delivered until fiscal year 2015, so it must be paid for in fiscal year 2015 with funds carried over from the prior year. To increase the detention center budget to pay for equipment ordered with a fiscal year... year 2014 purchase order, the equipment to improve radio communication within the detention center wasn't ready by 6:30 14, uh, so it must be paid for in fiscal year 2015 with funds carried over from the prior year. To increase fire emergency services budget for 100% homeland security grant carried over from fiscal year 2014, the grant funding will be used to purchase a truck to pull the mass casualty incident trailer and the companion animal mobile equipment trailer in, uh, to emergency locations. The purchase order was issued in fiscal year 2014, but delivery of the truck delayed until summer of 2014, and must be paid in fiscal year 2015, that's the year we receive it.
Mr. French, uh, not to interrupt, but I, I would like to ask a question. Uh, budget amendment, budget ordinance amendment number three has a net increase of expenditures in the general fund. If you total up all the items of 101,569 dollars, um, one of the precepts that we, when we adopted the bud, budget for this next fiscal year, it would, we would be, um, very fiscal, physically conservative about spending money out of, out of the general fund. Uh, are any of these funds not necessary?
They're all necessary, they've all been approved by this board prior, and it's all basically moving money from last fiscal year into this fiscal year.
We could not spend for various certain.
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we follow what we.
We, we.
Promise we will do.
I understand, and I, I appreciate that, but what this is, is more of a counting thing than anything else, some of those types of things that we'd have to move, things, what we're supposed to do is, we can't order something in 2014 and pay, and then it is delivered in the next fiscal year. We gotta pay for it, do it all in the same fiscal year.
I understand.
And so what this, what, this is really what this addresses, is that.
I understand what, what you said, I just want to make sure that we're.
Yes, sir.
Ever, ever watchful on this stuff.
Budget amendment number four is transfer funds between departments for allocation of annual in, insurance premiums for property and liability and workers' comp. This is something we do every year. Number, uh, budget amendment five is for the solid waste fund, for the, it's basically spreads that out to the solid waste fund. Likewise, budget amendment number six is for the county water fund, and number seven is for the revale fund. There, all those are to transfer funds for allocation of annual insurance premiums for property lib, property and liability and worker, workers' compensation.
Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
In reference to budget ordinance amendment number one?
Yes, sir.
Is this gonna be a monthly occurrence?
It, it will be, yes, sir.
Is there a reason why none of this has been budgeted or anticipated?
Um, in the past, we haven't, uh, budgeted those, those things, what we have been able to do in the past. Uh, this is more of a, this is, I guess, partially an accounting thing where, remember we talked in the budget process about not approving positions unless they're budgeted? What we can't do is, we can't pay out unless that money's budgeted, so we have to anticipate the rest of the fiscal year. So, but we'll still have some more of these. A lot of this wasn't budgeted because there was no idea how much some of these items would be, Commissioner.
Which items are you referring to on number one?
The, the vacation, holiday, comp time payouts. When somebody leaves, that is, there, you know, we don't know how much time they have, so that's, that's a payout that the county has to make. And that has to be.
Is there any way that the sheriff's department could coordinate better with you guys about this? I'm just, no.
Does this come over from turnover? I mean, is this?
This is a turnover issue, this, I don't see how in the world a man can call you up and say, this is Sheriff Chris, and, uh, January 31st of 2004, 15, I'm gonna have seven people leave. I mean, I don't know how you plan for that, because.
It's impossible.
I mean, if they want to leave, they leave. I don't see any way that you can plan for that. One of those things that happens.
That's not what I'm asking, I'm asking, you know, is there a, is, is this something that, I guess, uh, you know, is this something that occurs, uh, you said this is an accounting thing, so I.
It happens all the time.
Yeah, but.
And it's not just the sheriff's department?
It's, that's correct.
Right.
Well, it could happen in any other department.
But I, I guess, you know, we, you, it, this is a, I've not seen this in the budget ordinance amendments that I can recall before.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's probably not been a substantial amount, is the reason you hadn't seen it before. It probably was a substantial amount this time. I don't know. But you're right.
But, right on that last expl, explanation line, it says that, uh, this is, uh, one of these lines is from employees transferring from full-time to part-time status, but I thought that we had discussed not having any part-time status positions, I mean, am I missing?
No, sir, what we did is that you, we approved, in the budget, we approved a certain number of part-time, and so when we, when somebody leaves and somebody moves, that, we, we basically have state, well, we have stated that number or less.
Okay.
So if you, if your number is 32 and you have two people, part-time people leave, then somebody that's full-time wants to go to part-time, there's, there's one of your part-time, you see that, and they transfer from one to the other.
Mr. French, let, let me give you an example of what I used to deal with in, uh, previous employment, which may be applicable here to answer some of the issues. Uh, managed 18 people in the sales organization, and one day, I had two salespeople that came in and said, um, "I'm going to resign because I'm getting married in the next few weeks." Of course, we have to pay them for vacation pay that they have accrued. Uh, and then, uh, the next day, another person came in and said, "Uh, I've decided to retire", and, uh, and moved to another state specifically Florida, and you pay them for vacation time. In essence, that's kind of what you're dealing with here, in the, there's no way to forecast this stuff.
No, sir, there's, there's not.
But in reality, the money is already budgeted, because you have that buddy budgeted for their salaries that you'd be paying if they didn't quit.
But, but what you're doing.
Uh, yeah, but you're paying it all out at one time. But if they took their vacation, and most of these folks were on salary, then they would go ahead and get their money anyway.
Difference is, is that you normally don't pay all a person's vacation out.
Right.
Fiscal year, where the person might have three weeks, they may take a week or not be able to take any vacation, and so that, that would just accumulate to the next year.
Right.
The, the problem becomes when a person leaves, like you're saying, Commissioner Jennings, you are, all of you are saying.
My only concern is that, you know, it's, it's, it's not a big number for one time, but if this were a monthly occurrence, then you're talking about, you know, it's quite a large number.
But it will, uh, you know, it will be, something happens monthly.
Okay.
It's something I want to talk to the finance committee about when we meet later, but this is something that we're gonna have to work on. I mean, but it's gonna be something that continues because there's, with turnover, that's, you're gonna have this. You're gonna have payouts, or payouts where you pay.
And there are some departments that could be a substantial amount of payout.
Certainly.
Because there's some of them that have some tremendous amount of time built up.
Well, let's be careful how, yes, sir. Okay.
I understand, I mean, just being totally respectful.
I thi, I think I'm just getting a feel from the board, and I don't want to talk for anyone, but I guess what we're saying, Mr. French, is these budget amendments as they come this year are probably gonna be a little bit more scrutinized than they have been years past.
I, I understand.
Okay.
I understand. But I guess I'm saying, it, from the commissioner, from my point of view, um, when somebody leaves, and I know you understand that, you've got to pay them their time, their holiday pay.
Sure, absolutely.
Their comp, if they've got comp, and so on. So that's what you have right now, and our budget, we scrutinize it so much during the budget process, we turn, we, you know, there's not really much room, so therefore, that's why you're see, seeing these things.
Very good.
Entertained a motion to approve?
We approve.
I second it.
Any discussion? We've already had quite a bit.
I would like to say it's good to see that we get a $56,000 vehicle from the federal government for free.
I, I would like to add one point that, uh, Commissioner Ferguson made, and, and Mr. French, don't take the questions we're asking as.
Right.
Criticism. We're, we're just looking and relooking because of, uh, our budget process was long and arduous and very detailed this, for this coming fiscal year, and we're, I guess, continuing that examination as we go forward.
Yes, sir, okay.
Motion's been made, second, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Item number 11, other business, county manager's report, Mr. French?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Um, not gonna go over the county manager's, uh, update, there's a lot of information, but I would like to point out, you have in front of you a report on surplus properties sold from January 1st to June 30th, uh, as we're required to provide you, and we have that in front of you. We have Smoky Mountains Fourth Quarter Financial Report, which we, you receive each quarter, and there's also a monthly budget report, which is, uh, compares budget to actual funds for the 2013, 2014 fiscal year. Um, and again, we have a meeting scheduled for August the 18th at 6:00 at the county administration building for the public hearing on the revale. That, that's all, only item that'll be on the agenda at that time. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless there's a question about the report.
Was there, have any questions concerning the report?
No, just a comment, I think, uh, number eight, uh, as far as the change in the recycling procedures, and we've, uh, talked to our manager over recycling, Josh Mitchell, several times when he's appeared before the commission, that he was moving toward a less onerous process in recyclables, having to separate all of them, and I understand that that process has been implemented, uh, Mr. French, countywide now?
Yes, sir.
Which I think is a very positive move.
Oh, I love it.
And so do I, that's why I mention it.
Do we, uh, entertain a motion to approve the, uh, county manager's, uh, report?
I move that we, uh, accept the county manager's report as read.
I second.
Motion's made, second, any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Uh, the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve it.
I second.
Motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion?
Mr. French, uh, in reference to the surplus property that's coming up, is that gonna be put back into the general fund?
Uh, some of it will, some of it will not, some of it was purchased with, um, separate funds.
Any other discussion? And all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Mr. French, do we need a closed session?
Yes, sir, uh, for legal to consult with the county attorney.
Okay, uh, we will go into closed session, I'll make a motion under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Paragraph A, 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6, to prevent disclosure of confidential information as it regards to contractual and personnel degrees, prizes, awards, and economic development.
Second.
We will re-adjourn for the primary purpose of adjournment only.
Second.
Second, is there any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.